Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city 2015 land use plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item one is approval of the October 1st, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three, rezon in the AG Agriculture District to the C4 Plant Commercial District to allow use, for allowed uses at southeast corner of 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item four, rezoned from unzoned to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at south of I-90, east of Minnesota Avenue. Item five, rezoned from the RA-1 Residential District to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at 2900 North 4th Avenue. Item six is a rezone from the RA-1 Residential District to the Willow Creek Plant Development District for allowed uses at West 18th and Marion Road. Item seven is a rezone from the RA-1 Residential District to the RS-2 Residential District and C4 Plant Commercial District to the Emerald Valley Plant Development District for designated uses at northwest corner of 69th Street and southeastern Avenue. Item eight is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow motor vehicle service and repair at 3911 Southwest Avenue. Item nine is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow motor vehicle sales and repair at 3916 North Potsdam Avenue. Item 10 is a conditional use permit in the RS-2 Residential District to allow construction of a duplex at 100 through 102 South Holly Avenue. Item 11 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a telecommunications tower at 608 E 60th Street. Item 12 is a conditional use permit in the O Office District to allow the construction of a telecommunications tower at 5109 South Broadband Avenue, Broadband Lane, excuse me. Item 13 is a minor amendment in Sub Area B of the Lundstrom Plant Development District to allow minimum tree requirements to be established by a landscape plan to be approved by the Planning Director at 3300 West 69th Street. And item 14 is a preliminary subdivision plan in the C4 Plant Commercial District to develop allowed uses at southeast corner of 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who would object to those being on the consent agenda? If not, Planning Commission?
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Consent agenda is passed. For the regular agenda, there's two deferrals. Item number 21, which is rezoned from the O Office District to the Quail Crest Plant Development District for allowed uses at 5109 South Cliff. That has been deferred to the next meeting. And item 24 is a rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the C4 Plant Commercial District for allowed uses at East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue. So items 21 and 24 deferred. Is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda?
Motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second. There's a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Regular agenda is approved. So our first item on the regular agenda is item 15, which is a minor amendment in Sub Area B of Aspen Hills Plan Development District to install a six-foot fence along south side of the lot facing Madison Street at 5100 East Madison Street. Staff report.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall, representing planning staff on this first item tonight. And Janelle will be interpreting for us tonight, signing for the applicant. The applicant is Nicole Sukup. A single-family residence that were applying for a minor amendment to locate a six-foot high fence on the property line in the front yard of a property that has two front yards. The actual access from the front yard is from the north. Where the fence is proposed to be located is on the south along Madison Avenue, or Madison Properties within the vicinity of the subject property include single-family residences in this, in this plant development district and a church in the RS-2 district. According to the city zoning ordinances, you can only have a four-foot high fence, no more than a four-foot high fence, on the property line in the front yard unless you have an adjustment, which would allow six-foot in height at a 10-foot setback. And that's called for in the plant development regulations for this plant development district. The applicant would like to locate this six-foot fence on the property line, and that is what is being applied for. Staff has been out to visit the site, take some photographs, and those are included in your information packet and on the screen tonight. Shows the character of the neighborhood, including a double row of evergreen trees along Madison Street, where the fence was proposed to be located. 10-foot back would put it right in the middle of those trees. So in the past, we've considered amendments, and I've listed two of them in your report, to allow something different. A minimal amendment was approved in August of 1996, and the purpose of the amendment was to allow reduction in setback from 10-foot to 3-foot for installation of a six-foot high privacy fence. A minor amendment was approved in July of 2005 for the construction of a six-foot fence at the property line and a shed in the front yard setback. In taking the photographs, the one that's on the screen now looking east from the southeast corner of the subject property shows a required setback for a six-foot high fence, and then one that has been adjusted in setback, and that is the 3-foot setback for a six-foot high fence. Looking to the west, from the subject property, there's a chain link fence that is at the required 10-foot setback and is 4-foot high. Because of the nature of the property with respect to adjacent fencing options that have been approved and the location of the trees, staff is willing to recommend two options tonight for approval of the location of a six-foot high fence. One option would be a fence height of 5 feet at a setback of 5 feet, and the second option is the six-foot high fence at a staggered setback from 0 to 10 feet behind, or between the trees as shown by exhibit. We've included an exhibit in your information packet, and I believe there's one on the screen. It shows what we're talking about. In order to vary the setback and take into account the location of the trees, we would recommend to the petitioner that they provide us with a plan as to how they would vary their setback of a six-foot high fence to meet this intent. Those are our recommendations, and the applicant, we've had no calls from any property owners out there, and the applicant is here this evening to answer any questions. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. The applicant, please. Does the applicant have?
Hello. My name is Nicole Sukup. And my address, Mibat, that's 5100 East Madison Street, and that's here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57110.
Does the applicant have anything to add?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair, Nicole, do you understand that the recommendation includes two options?
Yes, I do.
And are you willing to prepare a plan for Planning Department approval?
Yes, I am. I can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 15?
I'll move for approval of item 15 with the two options as stated.
There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Item 15 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 16 is a revocation of conditional use permit number 2006-12-23 allowing motor vehicle sales, excuse me, motor vehicle display and sales in the I-1 Light Industrial District at 1700 North Cliff Avenue. Staff report, please.
On October 21st, the Planning Director sent notification to the applicant concerning site improvements that have not been made further approved plan, which is included in your information packet. And we are reporting that to you this evening, and the applicant has been invited to be present to answer any questions. The report and the minutes of the meeting at which time the conditional use permit was approved are included in your information packet. The applicant and owners are represented by Steve Scarborough, Scarborough Auto Sales. Information is the same in terms of the conditional use permit standards. The applicant had indicated a reuse of the existing building foundations on the property and has made building improvements. Board of Adjustment approval of reduced, had approved reduced setback for parking along Mulberry Street as indicated on the plan. And parking and access is provided indicating existing improvements and the proposed location for up to 13 cars to be displayed for sales. As you look through the minutes of the meeting, you notice there was some discussion to indicate was the applicant aware of the requirements to meet for zoning, for removal of inoperable vehicles, and they indicated they were aware of that and were in the process of removing those vehicles and making the required improvements to the property. At that time, it was looked at as a possible three months time period to allow that work to be done. On September 4th, 2008, a zoning officer contacted the applicant in a letter regarding conditional use permit violations, including parking multiple vehicles on the grass and storing multiple unlicensed and inoperable vehicles on the property. Corrective action was prescribed in removing the vehicles and discontinuing parking or driving until the surface was paved with concrete or asphalt. On September 19th, 2008, and again on October 1st, a zoning officer visited the site and observed and recorded continuing violations. We've included some of those photographs that the zoning officer took, and they're dated in the lower right-hand corner. And as you go through, you can see how the site does change from time to time, and we believe that the applicant is working on coming into compliance. However, time is long past for that, and we feel that the conditional use permit should be revoked and are recommending that this evening. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, if we revoke this conditional use permit, where does that put this applicant? Would he no longer be able to sell automobiles out of this particular site?
No longer be able to display and sell vehicles, that's correct. A conditional use permit is required by the state licensing bureau.
So that would happen instantaneous?
I believe so, or however long it takes for the state licensing to pull the license.
And if he objected to that, he could come back in and reapply for an additional conditional use permit?
The applicant could. We've, we looked to the applicant actually to provide us with the timetable and a plan of action. If that were presented this evening, then perhaps you could extend the time allowed for him to take corrective measures before we go to the city council with a recommendation for revocation.
Thank you, Steve.
And Steve, how would that, how would the mechanics of that be if that was the way we would go?
You would defer action on it this evening to allow the applicant time to prepare that plan, possibly, or to take action to remedy the situation.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Scarborough, 1700 North Cliff.
Mr. Scarborough, when you were here to get your conditional use permit now well over, almost 20 months ago, I in particular asked you several questions about getting this piece of property up to meet the standards provided under this conditional use permit, and you assured us at that time that that would not be a problem. And here we are, 20 months later, and it appears that though the site has changed, it is nowhere near being compliant. And so I don't know what you could possibly say, but I'm very interested that you could remedy this in a timely fashion that would not put you out of business.
What would you want changed? I'm not parking on the grass. All my vehicles run. I don't have any salvage. I can show you pictures of all my neighbors. I have, I don't have any cars in the grass. All my neighbors do. There's my closest neighbors, they have 100 in-op cars.
Okay. Well, you have a boat trailer parked halfway on the street and halfway in your property. I have an issue.
I didn't know that was a problem.
Well?
Because I've met with, with, with Jay, and he made an appointment with me for last Friday. I drove all my vehicles off the lot on Friday and cleaned up everything and hauled everything out that wasn't presentable.
And you did this last Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
But he got tied up. He didn't come over to take pictures. We drove them back in, parked them all in a neat row.
Well, therein lies my issue, though. This would happen in February of '07, and we gave you three months to get it done.
I got rid of the cars that don't run, yes.
And there were other conditions that were on there as well, right? It wasn't just the cars that don't run that was an issue.
Well, I was, I had, I had lawnmowers and stuff on the grass, and I moved them.
Have you seen the photographs that are part of the submittal that we have today that show photographs of your property with the various vehicles and?
No, I haven't.
Abandoned vehicles and things? Because I think this is the reference point of what we're seeing here tonight, which is how we view the current condition of your property.
Okay. That, that trailer's moved. That stuff is all, that's gone. That's all gone. That blue van, all that stuff is gone.
As of when?
Oh, the blue van, it was sold a while back, but they picked it up a couple days ago. But it hasn't been on the grass. I moved everything off the grass, and I had all in-op vehicles hauled away by Darryl Benning. Everything ran. We put batteries and stuff that we're working on. We got a vehicle there with a head gasket out that we got a head back from Botting Machine today that we'll be repairing this week.
So do you have some?
We have customer, we have like three or four customer vehicles that we're working on at the time, but everything runs. We drove them all off on Friday, but Jay got tied up and couldn't come over and take pictures of them.
Do you have some new photographs for us to look at tonight that would be different than the?
No, but I, I've got photographs of everything around me that shows that I am the only one that's not parking on the grass and the only one that doesn't have salvage vehicles.
It's, we just need to concentrate on, on your situation, not the neighbors tonight.
I don't have any salvage vehicles. I'm not parking on the grass. I, I asked Jay what to do, and he said this looks good. What do you want different?
Well, do you understand my point, though? You didn't have any salvage vehicles as of last Friday for the?
Correct.
20-some months up until that point.
No, it was before that. I have repos come and go, and I have to hold them for 30 days until I can get the proper paperwork from Pier. As soon as I can get the proper paperwork from Pier, I ship them off.
And I completely understand that that's the nature of part of your business.
Yes.
However, if you look at these pictures, they're various dates, and they're, it's obvious there are cars there that did not run, and they were there.
My cars aren't all brand-new.
And we don't expect that they would all be brand-new.
But I have to park about eight cars around my mopeds and my lawnmowers and stuff, otherwise they get carried away at night. They, people come in at night, they cut my locks, and they do that, so I have these cars, I drive in and park around them. That's why I have to have the vehicles around my stuff.
Other questions for Steve?
But they run. They run. They drive. I don't know what more you need. I don't have any cars with flat tires. I don't, I don't have in-op vehicles.
Mr. Chair, Steve, I think my fear?
I took 24 pictures this morning within a three-block radius where there's 300 cars that are salvage-out cars that don't run.
That is, is not?
I'm the only one in this area that's compliant.
Any relevance to your situation tonight?
My cars all run. What's the problem?
Can I speak?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I remember this discussion vividly when we first met Mr. Scarborough. And my fear, obviously, and Mr. Scarborough has not been able to provide us any assurance that this would not happen in the past, and certainly cleaning the parking lot off Friday does not give me a warm and fuzzy feeling that you're going to be able to maintain this for any significant period of time, because I don't think you understand what you're supposed to do, even though it's been, I suspect, explained to you by planning staff more than once. Is there anything you can say that would assure this commission that we're not going to, a month from now, three months from now, have you standing in front of us again?
Well, I plan on getting some fences built. Last year, the road was closed. Sales were, I had zero sales on Out Town. They even closed the road on Chambers, what they didn't have to, but they closed it anyway. This year, I had good moped sales. I don't sell a lot of cars. I have, I have three cars for sale. The rest are just repos that I'm working through. And I won't need the cars to park around my inventory if I can get some fences built. And hopefully, if sales continue, I can afford to put up the fences. But with the road closed last year, I was, I was put in a bad, bad way financially.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Scarborough, that's probably a wonderful plan, but you are still responsible for meeting the requirements of the conditional use permit before you have a fence. So I don't think anybody would have any argument with your installing fence, but the point is you're without a fence now. You can bring this into compliance, but you've chosen up until maybe last Friday to avoid
Well, I'm sure it was over a month ago when I hauled away the cars that didn't run, when I sent you the letter stating all the cleanup that I did.
I have a question to say. When the letter was sent to him on September 4th?
Is your mic on, Penny?
Yeah, it's. Is that better? I don't think it's working.
When the letter was sent to, oh, there it is. When the letter was sent to him on September 4th, do you, have you seen the letter? Was there a specific list of things?
Talking about parking on the grass, the car dealer on the grass right on the pier. This is all blocked from my shop.
Hang on a second, Steve.
Just a moment. Let me just, let me address staff. Was, was there a specific checklist of things that was sent to him?
Right. Jay in zoning, Jay Hemrick has been working with the applicant to address those requirements from zoning. The Planning Commission did approve the conditional use with only one stipulation, and that was that no inoperable vehicles on the property within three months. That was the condition that the Planning Commission put on there. All of these other things are zoning issues that make the property not compliant with the zoning ordinance. That's the building services and zoning checklist that they go through when the, when the applicant comes in for, with their plans to submit for approval of their occupancy permit.
And he's been given that list?
Right.
Okay. And, and was that, was that included in this September 4th letter, or was this in October?
I have it as October.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Steve, I think that, to expand on Meredith's point tonight, I think that it's great that you've worked with zoning to come into compliance on the issues that were put forth from you. Are you, are you clear moving forward as to what the zoning code says so that we aren't in this situation 30 or 60 or 90 days from now with similar offenses and similar scenarios that are spelled out through zoning code? And, and does that allow you to run your business at that location the way that you need to?
I don't have a problem getting rid of my cars, but I cannot sell them until Pier gives me a title, and that takes 30 days. And normally, the, the people that take the cars away, they have to have a minimum of two cars to be on the load.
So the stipulation that we have that basically says?
So I don't have a problem with getting rid of in-operated cars as soon as I can get Pier to give me a title.
All vehicles needing to be licensed and operational within? All vehicles needing to be licensed and operational within three months, that's, that's a stipula, that's a condition that you can live with?
We cannot license our cars now because the license plates stay with the owner. Once they're assigned to a dealer, we put on blue tags because July of '08, you have to pull all the license plates off. No dealer in town licenses their vehicles.
Okay. But any inoperable vehicles come on and off your lot, usually within thirty days, you're saying?
Well, I've, I've had some tie-ups that take longer from Pier that they've, uh, in fact, I just had one that they lost the, they lost all my, um, tags and it took almost ninety days because I had to send out certified letters again because they lost them. And then you have to wait thirty, thirty days after you send out certified letters before you can apply for a title again. And then it takes Pier a while to process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And I was wondering if I can leave you the pictures, the pictures I took last year of the in-house cars, all within a couple blocks of my shop. And many of them have over a hundred cars in their lot that are in-house. This one is blocking Sherman Avenue.
Hand them to Dave there. Is there anyone else in the audience who would care to speak on this item? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair. For the sake of discussion this evening, I'd like to make the motion to revoke or advise the city council to revoke this conditional use permit. A second?
All right, there's a motion and a second to revoke the conditional use permit. Is there commission discussion?
Mr. Chair. From reading the notes back from February of '07, I think Jesse had, uh, made the motion to grant an extension to the first conditional use permit. Looking at the notes, I see that I had seconded that motion. And I guess I was also looked with the understanding that Steve kinda knew what he was supposed to do and how he was supposed to treat his property. I look at the notes, there's a zoning officer contacting him on September 1st about multiple violations. Again, on September 19th, with continuing violations. The applicant then sends a letter on the 10th of October. The zoning officer goes back October 15th, observed and recorded continuing violations. Uh, I would have thought the last time Steve would have gotten the point, and I'm not sure if that granting more time will, would, would do us a lot of good here. I'm going to support the, uh, the motion for revocation.
Any other discussion?
Kenny, I would agree. I think, um, looking back at the transcript of this meeting, um, I too remember it quite clearly. And I was under the clear impression that Steve completely understood what needed to be done and within the timeframe that it needed to be completed. And the fact that, um, that timeframe extended a year beyond when it should have, I think, is a clear indication of what the future holds for that piece of property. So I, I too will support the revocation of this conditional use.
Other discussion? If not, uh, we have a motion, a second to revoke the conditional use permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Uh, item sixteen, uh, conditional use permit is revoked. Item seventeen is a one-year review of conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment, Beer and Wine Bistro at 420 East 8th Street. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dave Lovin, and I'll be representing, uh, staff on this and other items. Uh, the applicant is Jerry Howk with Craftman, Craft, Craftsmen Creek Studio. Um, they were before you for a six-month review back in May of this year. And, uh, the review process is a stipulation that, uh, that, uh, the city planning commission had put on the initial conditional use permit approval. In reviewing this item, the city police and fire departments and the city zoning office have not indicated any problems with security or use of the property since the time that it's opened. Downtown Sioux Falls has not reported receiving any comments or concerns regarding this permit either. So we are recommending, uh, acceptance of the review and which would allow the continuing operation of the, uh, conditional use. So, and we have asked the applicant to be here with any questions. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Howk. Uh, my address is 1215 South Phillips Avenue.
Anything to add?
Nope, not so far.
Any questions for Jerry?
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to tell Mr. Howk that I'm really impressed with your facility and it's really a nice addition to downtown.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to echo that. It's a very nice establishment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll bring you a beer next time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there a motion to accept the review?
I'll make a motion to approve the, to accept the review of the conditional use permit for Monks.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Uh, item seventeen, we've accepted the review. Item eighteen is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to allocate mixed-use future land uses at East 57th Street between South Dakota Highway 11 and South Six Mile Road. Staff report.
The applicant, uh, is requesting to allocate mixed-use future land uses on this parcel as part of a potential expansion, extension of the Falcon Heights Plan Development District, which was reviewed. Um, the future land use for the property to the east, which you can see on your screen as the purple and the, and the, uh, red shaded areas. Were, the future land use was approved in June of two, of two thousand eight and the zoning was approved in September of two thousand eight as well. Um, this parcel that we're, that we're considering tonight is seventy-eight point seven acres and, uh, current use is agricultural. The previous, the previous approvals included fifty-five acres of mixed-use, uh, land uses and thirty-eight acres of commercial. The applicant is requesting, uh, that improvements to East 57th Street be included as a development-driven street project. And, uh, that petition is on file with the Public Works Department. And the developer has also indicated that in order to fulfill the vision of the project, a mixed-use designation is required. The proposed uses would include commercial, office, open space, residential and civic uses, and their interaction with each other depends upon the ability of the developer to promote a mixed-use environment. Uh, this portion of the growth area has not yet been assigned a land use designation, and so the applicants are making, uh, requests to do so. So, uh, one of the stated goals of the developers with this project include providing enough complimentary uses to keep much of the traffic on-site within the general area, and that is a typical characteristic of mixed-use developments in that you have the interaction with the various uses, which, uh, requires less off-site travel to, um, for work and live and play. Um, because the subject application accommodates future land uses and proposes, and proposed developments should be consistent with physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, we are recommending approval of this future land use amendment. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Uh, Robert Nats, uh, 2505 South Poplar Drive, Sioux Falls. Here to answer any questions.
Questions for Bob? Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item eighteen?
Mike Nelson, 7975 East 57th Street. I live right on east side of this property that's being looked at. And, uh, on here, we have Six Mile Road. On there, you have Six Mile Road. But Six Mile Road don't exist. So what's the plan for that? That's my question. It's just a vacant road.
Okay, we'll let Jeffrey from staff.
Jeff Schmidt from City Planning. Uh, Six Mile Road, as he states, is, does not extend all the way to 57th Street. Now, it's on our major street plan as a future arterial road. It's not in the CIP to be constructed at this point, but it's in a long-range plan to be constructed. It doesn't have a bearing necessarily with this request. But it's something that we look forward to as we continue to plan the east side and whether it needs to be constructed and to what size. Is it a four-lane road, a six-lane road, or an eight-lane road, and when does it need to be constructed?
Does that answer your question, sir? Anyone else care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item eighteen?
Motion to approve item eighteen. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item eighteen is recommended for approval. Item nineteen is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses for the allocation of commercial, single-family residential and parks and open space land uses at north side of E69th Street between Sycamore Avenue and South Dakota Highway 11. Staff report.
And the applicant is, is Charles Point of Ronnie Enterprises. Uh, the size of the parcel is ninety-seven acres. Sanitary sewer and water services are available to the site. Uh, the applicant is responsible to participate in the cost recovery programs that are in effect in this area prior to the approval of any new class. Uh, the applicant has provided for more intensive commercial land uses along the major roadways and single-family residential to the rear of the subject property in addition to approximately twenty acres of parks and open space. The integration of parks and open space land uses into the residential neighborhoods is a primary goal of our 2015 comprehensive plan. Currently, the future land use map does not include the subject property, rendering it non-assigned. With the availability of both sewer and water services to the area, it is appropriate to provide for future land use designations. The arterial street network in this area will require improvement prior to the development of the site, and the applicant can request improvement as development-driven street projects, uh, for E69th. You see on, on the map that the planned South Dakota Highway 100, uh, borders this property to the east. The timeframe for the construction of this segment of the, of the, um, road has not yet been established. Because the subject application required accommodates future land uses and it is consistent with physical characteristics of the surrounding neighborhoods, we are recommending approval of this future land use designation. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Chuck Point, Ronnie Enterprises, 4401 East 6th Street, Sioux Falls. Don't really have anything to add, and I can sure answer questions or we can talk about the street layout or whatever you want to talk about.
Questions for Chuck? Going to be easy on you tonight, Chuck.
I'm sorry?
Going to be easy on you tonight.
Looks like a nice plan, Chuck. Looks like you got a lot of residential there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item nineteen? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve future land use amendment, item nineteen. A second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item nineteen is recommended for approval. Item twenty is a future land use amendment to allow changes in future land uses to reallocate office, commercial and multifamily residential land uses at southeast corner of South, Southeastern Avenue and E69th Street. Staff report.
Uh, the applicant, as you stated, is requesting, uh, reallocation of future land uses from multifamily residential primarily in commercial in the, in the corner, uh, to single-family office, single-family residential office and multifamily land uses. Uh, the applicant is Donald Dunham of Dunham Companies, and the size of the parcel is forty-one acres. We expect transitions from the arterial street intersections to single-family residential within the boundaries of the subject section, which basically is stating that we are looking for commercial at the intersections, at the major arterial intersections and transitioning toward single-family as we go, uh, further into the subdivision. Access standards and permits are under the purview of the Public Works Department. South St. Troy Avenue, which is right in the middle of the subject parcel, is the access point onto E69th Street and is the boundary between the commercial land uses and office land uses along E69th. East St. Jerome Trail is the access from South Southeastern and separates commercial land uses from the multifamily residential uses to the south. The intersection of 69th and Southeastern will be a primary intersection in the southeastern part of the city, uh, in the future. And it is appropriate to expect some demand of commercial and office land uses in this area. The city has initial plans to begin improvements to E69th Street and South Southeastern beginning next year in 2009, and the upgrade to these roads to full arterial standards depends both on the pace of development in the area and funding sort, funding levels available. We are recommending approval of this future land use amendment because it will meet the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood and accommodates future land uses in this area. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Don Dunham, 230 South Phillips Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions or add whatever you want.
Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty? If not, is there commission action?
I move for approval of item twenty.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty is recommended for approval. Item twenty-one has been deferred, and that is a rezone from the old office district to the Toil Crest Plan Development District for allowed uses at 5109 South Cliff Avenue. That has been deferred until next meeting. Item twenty-two is a rezone and major amendment from the RD Residential District and the RS2 Residential District to Subarea A of the Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District at West 16th and 17th Street from Grange Avenue to West Avenue. Staff report.
Uh, the subject application covers an area basically from West 16th and sev, and, and 17th Street, uh, from Grange Avenue to West Avenue. The applicant is Don Coiman of the Sanford USD Medical Center, and the size of, the approximate size of this area is eight and a quarter acres. Uh, the existing land use residential is pri, uh, the existing land use is primarily residential, uh, with some office. There are two aspects to this application. The first is a rezone to include that area that has just been highlighted on your screen. Uh, the second is a major amendment to the Plan Development District, which would, uh, which would add residential as an allowed use in this subarea. Um, this would be incorporated into Subarea A of the, of the Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District. This area has, this, uh, PD has experienced numerous additions since its creation in nineteen ninety-three. The applicant is requesting the rezoning and the major amendment to allow both the expansion of the hospital campus and allow the continued use of the property as single-family residential uses for those property owners who have decided not to sell their property to Sanford Health. Any, uh, future, future impervious surface construction would require, uh, compliance with city engineering standards and increased runoff would, uh, therefore require mitigation. Because the, because the subject application is in conformance, uh, largely with surrounding land uses and provides language that allows residential uses, staff recommends approval of the rezoning and major amendments, um, with the subarea regulations that have been included in your packet.
Okay, questions for Dave?
Mr. Chair, Dave, did I hear you say that they're asking us to rezone properties they don't currently own?
That's correct. That's what they're questioning.
Is that typical?
It's happened before. I don't have a specific example off the top of my head. I believe Avera has, uh, done something similar with their campus as well, incorporating residential into their subareas with properties. into their subareas with properties that they haven't yet acquired.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Orland Chutter, Vice President of Facilities at Sanford Medical Center, thirteen oh-five West Eighteenth Street. With regard to this application, we held a neighborhood meeting back in September on the twenty-second, very well attended. I believe we had fifty-plus some neighbors in the auditorium for that discussion. We had good discussion with neighbors, and basically I believe it, it focused on three primary questions that I'd like to share with you. I think the first very fair question was what is the overall plan? What do we intend as an organization to do in those areas or in that property? I'll come back to that in a moment. How will it impact property values was a question that we were asked. And finally, what should we as homeowners, those people who were represented, what should we do? Let me go back to the first question, which is what is the overall plan? We continue to have increasing needs for healthcare on our campus, which comes with the increasing need for parking. Our intention in this area is to continue to develop surface parking. In fact, there are a number of properties within this boundary that we currently own. Many of those have been removed just over the course of the last three to four weeks. That process is continuing. The line that has been drawn basically at the eight hundred block from West Avenue to Grange Avenue, you'll note that Sixteenth Street does not go through, but by designing the line at Sixteenth Street, basically we're indicating to both the neighbors and to the city that our intention, as we acquire properties or for those properties that we do own, is to develop parking north of Seventeenth Street, but not to exceed what would be Sixteenth Street or the eight hundred block. Now, we recognize that we do not own a number of properties within this boundary, and again, in discussion with the planning office, the recommendation generally is to try to devise boundaries and zoning that are more linear as opposed to going around properties that you may or may not own. Frankly, if there's people who have concerns about being included in a rezone, we have no objection if they're not in the rezone request, if we do not own those properties. But there is an advantage, I believe, to having properties rezoned in a linear fashion where it's clearly identified what our intention long-term would be in terms of growth, and that's our intention. How will it impact property values? Of course, none of us know the answer to that. Our response to that question would be that I believe the most important time in terms of property value is if a person would decide to sell their property. In this particular case, we have been a very fair purchaser of properties within this area and would continue that plan. What should homeowners do? We were asked repeatedly that night, should we, what would be the advantages for us to be included in your Plan Development District or to be excluded? Frankly, we were not in a position then or now to give advice. We suggested that people seek appropriate answers to that question, but we did not offer any sort of solutions for people who had those types of questions. And again, I would just say that we are aware that there are properties within this boundary that we do not own, and if there are people who object to being a part of the rezone, we certainly have no objections to that. Questions?
I have a couple of questions for you, Orland. Have you drawn a line at West Avenue on your main campus as, at West Avenue that you won't go any further west? And so you're going to go north? Is that the overall plan?
That is correct. We currently have an agreement with the city, gentleman's agreement, if you will, that we will not go west of West Avenue. We're making that same commitment not to go north of the eight hundred block or Sixteenth Street, which does not exist in those three blocks. Obviously, south of our property at Twenty-Second Street, which is currently the boundary of our property, but as I'm sure you're aware, we also own the NABs property. We'll take possession of that sometime next summer, so there's potential for growth south of Twenty-Second Street. But you're correct in asking about the west boundary and also the north boundary of the eight hundred block.
And one other question, when you buy properties in that area, do you immediately move the house or tear it down, or do you sometimes rent it, or how does that?
We actually owned a number of properties in this area that were rented for a long period of time. When it came time for us to have additional need for surface parking, those properties were vacated. We go through a process of then allowing Habitat Free Management to go through those homes, take whatever items are usable, and take those out of those homes. Our fire department and police department use them for training purposes, and then eventually those houses are razed.
Thank you. Any questions for Orland?
Orland, as part of your discussion with the city when, when you proposed this new rezoning area where you're pushing north, have, have you submitted in, in concept some sort of a master plan or anything to help the neighborhood or the community understand sort of what that looks like? Or have you gotten that far in your planning?
It has not been designed yet. The advantage and the reason that we're looking to remove those houses this time of year and get into the fall season is it allows us the winter months to design those parking lots. As we heard, there will be requirements for BMP or water retention. We will comply with all of those, of course, but they have not been designed yet because, frankly, the, the first step is making sure that the zoning is appropriate and removing the houses and, and preparing for that. We'll be back, of course, when it's time to actually submit a final development plan and so on, but we don't have those done yet.
And this might be kind of an unfair question. I don't know it, because I know that your, your world is changing quickly in healthcare, but do you put a timeframe around this kind of expansion in terms of how long you think this will last you? Is this ten years? Is this twenty years? Is this five years?
That's, I wouldn't call it an unfair question. I would call it a difficult question. It's always very difficult to know what the expansion plans will be, depending on how fast the needs for healthcare continue to grow, et cetera. I, I would expect that these types of plans, when we talk about a boundary of West Avenue and a boundary of the eight hundred block going north, I would expect these plans to be at least five to ten-year plans. Now, things can change, and those would be out of our control, but I don't anticipate that we would stand before you in twelve months and say, well, now we want to go further west or further north.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty-two?
My name is Mark Boyd. I live at seven twenty-nine South Grange. I guess I just have two questions. Obviously, I've watched probably a dozen plus homes right around my neighborhood be knocked down the last couple of weeks, a little discerning. I guess my two questions is, one, is there future plans to make Sixteenth Street go all the way through east to west? Because there's three blocks on the map where Sixteenth Street stops. And two, if this rezoning doesn't pass, what do they do with the property where they've already knocked down a dozen plus homes recently?
Orland, could you address those items, please?
I believe the first question was related to whether or not Sixteenth Street might eventually go straight through. It'd be impossible to know because, again, those properties, we don't own those properties. If we owned all of those properties, we would likely be in discussion with the city about that possibility, but it would be impossible for me to know again because it's not properties that we own. In terms of the second part of the question, what happens in the area where housing has already been removed? If the zoning is not approved, I believe parking is already allowed in those areas. We may have to ask the city to clarify that, but in that particular area, I believe parking is already allowed, so it wouldn't be necessary for the entire area to be in our PDD. But again, I'm, I'm not the expert. I need help with that question.
Can we get staff to just maybe address that?
To allow parking in that type of an area, you see RS two, and then there's office zoning. It'd have to be RD, RA one or RA two, and you can approve then off-site parking by conditional use, so they would have to come before you. But in RS two, you can't, there's no off-site provision for parking.
So it'd be rezoned with a conditional use, but it could be done without being part of the PD?
They wouldn't be able to put off-site parking in the RS two districts without a rezoning in the districts that are multifamily or the office districts. I believe that they, they would be able to submit a conditional use permit application and come before you for off-site parking.
Dave, I think RS two would allow up to a single-family, multifamily, up to fourplexes?
Up to duplex by conditional use.
Up to duplex.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
My name is Sarah Alexander, and I live at A one-seven Menlo. And I guess I'm concerned for a lot of reasons. First of all, we felt in the, I felt definitely that there was not good notice for the destruction of the homes. I walk my dog twice a day in that neighborhood constantly, all over it, and I never saw a single sign and had no clue that this was happening until the day before, when a Sanford employee was pulling out trees and said, we might as well save some of these trees. And it was pretty horrifying to see that happen and have no clue that it was going to happen. And then I also feel like this meeting, there were only six days notice about this meeting and small signs, so people were taken by surprise when a lot of people were out on Sunday and we were talking about it, and people were taken by surprise by this meeting. And a lot of people didn't know about it. And so that's just one sort of thing about process that's concerning. And I think, as other people have said, another question is, well, where is this really going? And, you know, this, as a neighborhood as a whole, it's of concern, and I'm to the east of it, and he had not said that he's not going to move east, that Sanford is not going to move east, so I'm extremely concerned about my own property. But even beyond the property issue, I guess the thing I'm concerned about is if it turns into, a parking lot is one thing, and that's what they've said, but would at a later time, would it become something else? And I think that if it's a parking lot, it's not terribly friendly to pedestrian people walking around, and it's also not the safest situation for people walking at night because a parking lot is big and empty and all the employees have gone home, and that makes your neighborhood both cut up and it makes it not very safe. And so I am not very happy that it's going to be turned into a parking lot. And I think that it breaks up our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has integrity as a neighborhood, and it just, just to, to break it down, isn't the city there to protect where people live a little bit in addition to the institutions? And so that concerned me a lot. And then another issue is that on Grange, there has just been so much traffic to the hospital, and this is only increasing. And that, obviously, just the hospital keeps growing and growing, and that makes it more and more traffic. And I guess I'm wondering if the city is thinking of a larger plan with this. When I spoke with Mr. Loveland about what could go on the property, he said that, you know, there's a list of things. It could be a clinic, it could be a parking lot, it could be a daycare center, but it also could be a helicopter pad, and that would be really not a pleasant thing to have the next block over. And already, because we live near Sanford, there's a blue light all over the building that's on all night long, and each parking lot is quite lit up, and so you have a different feel in your windows, and I don't think we need more of that. And I think people won't want to live there, and I think it's actually a very nice place to live, and I hope that the city would try to protect that to a certain extent for the residents. And I guess a question I would have is why can't Sanford, if they need more parking, they have so many parking lots, why can't they build up as opposed to out? And why do they have to keep taking away neighborhood places to live? And I think that they would want the area around them to be a vibrant residential area where their employees could live and be happy and be close and wouldn't need parking so much. I mean, that's another concept of an institution in a neighborhood as opposed to a huge institution, and everybody drives in from a long ways away.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sarah?
Sarah, thank you for your comments. Over the times I've been on this, we've, we've dealt with this issue a couple of times as far as the expansion of Sioux Valley Hospital. There have been other neighbors like you come up and speak in the same way. And yet it's a real dilemma. It's, it's, it's become an awfully big institution. I, I really feel they have a severe parking problem over there right now. I, I don't know the going up is, is, is in the plans and the future plans or not, but I think it'll come to a point sometimes where it'll maybe expand to a point where they might have to look at that.
When, when do you see that point? I mean, we, we, it's, it's your city. It's our city.
I know. I, I don't know. And, and I sympathize with some of the folks that come up that, gosh, I'm living, now I live next door to a parking lot. What I've seen of Sioux Valley, I think, or Sanford, do an awful good job of trying to visit with the neighbors, trying to visit with the neighborhood, trying to explain what they're doing. And I think overall, the lots that they, they put up, I think, I think we get a chance to review them. I think they have to come in with a plan. I think they're trying to make it as friendly as they can. Security, I think, is a full-time job for those folks, be it in the parking ramp or, or in their parking lot. I, I hear what you're saying, but I think the expansion is something that we also have to kind of pay attention to.
Can't think, Sarah. What about in another part of the city where there's more open land and they're not destroying homes? I mean, I think there's options to this.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take one more, and then we need to wrap up public testimony.
My name is Mike Langford. I live at thirty-two hundred South Marion Road, and I own property on Grange Avenue. Believe it or not, over a half a century ago, I was born in Sioux Valley Hospital, so I'm not against Sioux Valley Hospital in any way, shape, or form. And Orland said tonight, and I'm not against him either for that matter, about the, the fact that if we didn't want our property zoned institutional, we could opt out on that. What do we have to do to do that? Because I think there are some of us that don't want to do that at this time. Should the hospital buy the property from us? Not a problem at all. They can, they can zone it any way they want to. But until that day happens, I think it's a single-family home, it's on single-family property, should stay that way.
Any questions for Mike?
Mike, that's a good question, and I think when we get done here, we'll ask staff how, if you don't want yours zoned. I, I think that should be your right. You should have.
Well, I, you know, there's a lot of people, not, there's about thirty houses in this area that, that they don't own, and I'm sure there are some people that probably didn't make it here tonight that are going to ask that question. And, go ahead.
I'm sorry, do you understand the, the addition that they made to the subarea regs that do allow residential uses, which, which does protect you from the standpoint that you'll never be forced to change that use while you're there? I mean, there is, there is inclusion for your types of property in that zoning, so in a sense...
I guess I totally don't understand that because...
And I think maybe staff should explain that to you because it, it's one of the things that, that has helped me a little bit with, you know, trying to understand why we might possibly do this in a situation where Sanford doesn't own all of that property, so maybe let Jeff explain that.
They were very courteous in having a meeting for us, and, and they're right. They invited us, a lot of people showed up there, but there's only a limited amount of time to be able to go into all this in depth, so it wasn't all totally explained.
And I, I would like Jeff to explain that to, to us tonight, what that means, that inclusion in the subarea regs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if neighbors have more questions, they're free to talk to us about this. As Sarah was talking, I made some notes. One of the things that staff's done in the last month and a half since we met with... done in the last month and a half since we met with the neighbors at Sanford's hospital is we've put all the master plans on the city's website at siouffalls.org. We have the master plans, the plan developments for Avira, for Sanford, for USF, for Augustana, for Southeast Tech, for Regent's University. So people, again, that are close to these large institutions, that have parking issues, that have large complexes, they can look at them. And we continue to talk about, we're treating them to similar, and people can see that, and as well as we want people to get used to, if something's happening, we can get used to people looking at that website to find out what's taking place in their neighborhood. In regards to this, the questions that I was addressing at the neighborhood meeting were, okay, we're currently zoned residential, so we can be residential, and we can do construction and put on additions on our property within that residential district? Yes. Well, then what happens if we're getting rezoned into this district? You're still allowed to be residential in that district. You're still allowed to have all of the same accessory structures and the abilities to be a residential property. One of the gentlemen kept getting up and explaining that, yeah, but I was told at a planning commission meeting at one time that if I put a garage on, I would have to come back to planning commission and request a conditional use to get a garage. That is not true. This addresses that. This allows people in a single-family house the same rights in this PD as they do in the other PD. What we, staff does not want to see, this has nothing to do with Sanford. Sanford will do whatever the neighbors want. What staff doesn't want to see is what's happened on the east side. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we came and requested them to draw the boundary to the east that they were going to propose and develop, go back to the other exhibit, Steve, it's much easier to see. And the neighbor said, "No, do not include us." And you end up with this, one parcel's in, one parcel's out, one parcel's in, and you don't get the imagery of where is Sanford going, what's their master plan? And then the neighbors continue to call us and go, "How are we supposed to plan and understand what Sanford's doing when you don't show us?" Well, we're asking them, again, to show us to the north what your plan development is, so that the neighbors know, as well as they have the same rights in the future as they do today.
So homeowner would never, ever have to sell if they would choose not to?
Absolutely not.
It has nothing to do with that?
No. They're still residential property. They can remain residential property. They have residential rights. They can do additions and remodels and build on garages and accessory buildings, all of that. But at the same time, as we mentioned, we have one that we know of, one property owner, I want to make sure this is on record, because she's not able to attend tonight, that does not want to be included. We are taking her legal description out of this. There will be one little piece that's excluded. If there's other property owners that absolutely do not want to be included, for whatever reason, we'll take their legal out of there. But I think they miss out on a lot of opportunities to continue to have rights.
Jeff, in that process, what we recommend tonight, we'll go to city council. If those neighbors that didn't want that zoning change, you could make that change between now and city council.
They give us their address, we pull up their legal description, we'd exclude that from the rezoning.
Jeff, back, and I'm one of the newer people on this commission. The gentleman's agreement that you originally had with Sanford, I can remember that there was an agreement not to go west of West Avenue. I think it also entailed not going south of 22nd? No?
No.
How about going north? Was there any agreement as far as that was concerned?
No, not that I'm aware of. The first one that we really talked to Orland Shetter about was, let's keep west as your western boundary, and he agreed to that. And so, and they've always talked about using NAB's property, and now we, again, talk to them about, well, how far do you really think you're going to go north? It's really hard to say how far north. I mean, they're already at 17th, and they were saying, well, we're not really sure how far. Well, 16th. That's kind of a, well, we don't know if we're going to have, well, let's just say 16th is a boundary.
I mean, I think what I like about this, even though I certainly, I mean, this is a tough, this is a tough issue, I understand the neighbor's issue about being close to this institution and the realities of that, but this is transparency. I mean, this is really kind of a statement of intent.
Right.
You know, and that's why I was trying to understand the length of time for that. But something to allow this neighborhood and those people, it's not a back room by property at a time. It's sort of a stated intent of what's going to go on, and that's a good thing. That's a positive step.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Jeff, would you be sure that that gentleman maybe got your number or some of staff's number?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. I'm going to close public testimony on item 22 and look for commission action.
I will move for approval of item 22. One second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I too understand that this can be very difficult for a neighborhood, but Sanford has been a neighbor in that neighborhood for a very, very long time, and I think that they are, they are looking out for the best interest of the neighborhood by coming forward and trying to do a planned development district here. I understand that it's surprising when some houses come down and you didn't know about it. However, they are the property owners, and they are entitled to do with their property what they choose. So I think they're trying to operate in the best manner that they can to operate a big organization in a quiet little neighborhood. And there are some challenges that come with that, and we hope we can accommodate the neighbors best we can by allowing you to opt out of that if you'd like. But we do need, we need to help them as well as they move forward and try and redevelop the property that they need to do, the business that they need to do.
Agreed. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 22 is recommended for approval. Item 23 is a rezone from the Granite Valley Plan Development District to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at Quarry Avenue between Robar Drive and Dyke Avenue. Staff report.
The applicant for this piece of land is Don Dunham, with the Dunham Company. The parcel size is five, approximately five acres. The existing land is vacant. This piece of land is located in the, I believe it's in SubArea A of the Granite Valley Plan Development District. The underlying zoning in SubArea A is C4. The purpose of this request is to allow for truck service and repair, which is not allowed in the C4 district, and so they're asking to go to industrial, I-1 industrial. To do, to do part sales then at a later date when they construct the building, they'll need to come before you with a conditional use permit application for the sales portion of what their plan is. The applicant is required to construct Quarry Avenue. Quarry Avenue is not yet being constructed. Both Robar and Dyke, I believe, have been constructed, but Quarry has not. And in addition to constructing the road, they're required to construct sidewalks adjacent to their property as well. Mitigation of runoff from the site must be addressed to conform with city engineering standards. And because the subject application conforms to the 2015 future land use map and does not negatively impact neighboring properties, we are recommending approval of this rezoning.
Any questions for Dave?
Mr. Chair. Dave, I know Don likes to have neighborhood meetings. Did you require him to have any neighborhood meetings?
We did not request it at this location, particularly because they're pretty far south of where the residential starts occurring. And this was, and they are in the commercial area that was bordered to the east by industrial, so we are not concerned, I guess, with this location.
Thank you, Dave.
Is the applicant here, please?
Thank you, Don Dunham, 230 South Phillips Avenue. I actually have a picture of the building that's going to be going on this site, if you'd like to pass it around. Or did everybody get it in their packet? I also just like to make a few, oh, there it is. The plan right now is, by contract, we've agreed to put in Quarry Avenue in 2009, and they plan to break ground in 2010. This is a very large company. They have several sites in the United States. And in fact, I noticed they were just featured in the Sioux City Business Journal last week. But the, but it's, but they're about 50% retail slash commercial and about 50% service. So city zoning thought we should, we should have it zoned industrial versus the C4 commercial that's there now.
Thanks, Don. Any questions?
Don, any idea how many employees they might have, or they're bringing a ton?
You know, I knew everything but that, Ken.
Looks like a good business, good company.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience here to speak on item 23?
Excuse me, Dwayne Spader, 5417 North Indiana Avenue. I got three, can be three comments. One, the first one is the view point, the second one is a semi-concern, and the third one is a request. My view point on it...
Can you do that all in five minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
My view point is, I think it's tragic that the city is not using the advantage of the I-90 corridor, I've spoken on this several times before, plus personal attempts to try to set the example. But down the road in years to come, I do believe that Mitchell and Rapid City are surpassing it. And I do not expect also that one person should have to stand this whole thing. So I'm not objecting to that, but I just think it's overall tragic planning that we aren't utilizing the I-90 corridor as an entree into the city. That's my view point. And I'd said this from previous attempts, myself, to do something on property that I've now disposed. One final attempt, and I don't go through, I've given up on it. Number two, my concern. When this was originally plotted, if you look on Robar Drive, we have the campground and the Spader campus center right up there. And there was a street that was plotted to go across, so that it wasn't a dead end. Now, there are about eight businesses, I think, up there. There's lots of trucks coming and going, and it's really a dead end with one street. And that was impressed upon me many, many times when the city was opposing my development. But it's also, I've come now, Don did, I asked for Don's here, he does have one towards, closer to the street, but further back. It's a dead end. And I know that Robar Drive is going way through, because when we moved there in the 70s, I had to get the easement for it to go through. But that was 30 years ago, and I don't know who else is going to ever develop it. But in the meantime, we've got about eight businesses up there with pretty much a dead end, which was not planned, and things would change from the original. And I'd like to know why that happened. I was not around to catch it, but why it happened and why planning allowed it to happen. The third I'm going to request, so that's my concern. It's less of a concern that, when he showed me the other ones, but if you go back further, he is putting a street across, when you go back further, it's still dead end. The third request, and this is going to be unusual, but I'm going to ask it because of past experience, I'm going to request, and I don't know how else to do it, that if you approve this, that the city also, this is right in the waterway zone, the city gives me a written letter assuring me that we will not be troubled with the water flow that has been issued through there. And this is attaching on it. And I ask that because we are right, our campground is right in the water flow. It is partially, pretty much solved. North of the interstate, you see the little red thing up there on the north side of the interstate? That was the holding pond that's being filled in. And I know what's going to happen. That water's going to come right through the campground. And if the city allows certain things to be done on that property, they're going to just box the campground in, and it's going to flood the campground as it has done. So I would, and I don't want verbal, I want a written letter from the city stating that they will assure me that that development and development around it will not affect the campground, because past promises have been fruitless in that respect.
Okay. Any questions for Dwayne?
Mr. Chair, Dwayne, I don't know if the city's willing to give you that letter or not, but this commission does not deal with drainage. We only deal with land use issues. There will be, and maybe staff can get up and address this, but there will be a plan check and engineering process that's separate and apart or follows this at such time this is developed. So, do you understand that?
You don't address the water issues, but you could be, I see no reason that it couldn't be conditioned that in an approval of this, that they assure us that our water issue is not done.
Well, you're asking a citizen board to do that, and we don't guarantee, we only deal with land use issues and zoning issues.
Any other questions for Dwayne? Okay, thank you.
I can address a couple of the comments that he had, one particularly for access in this area. The, you know, the Granite Valley East got Dyke Drive to the north, Rober Drive, and then we'll construct Quarry Avenue on the east portion of this property. So this property does have the access that, you know, they would need for police and fire standards. As far as, you know, water retention or detention, I believe that this area is located in a regional BMP with the city public works department. But if they're not, I don't have that information for certain, but if they're not, they would be required to either detain or retain the stormwater on their site, given city engineering standards. And that is part of a plan check process before they can get building permits. So we, you know, I can't speak for the public works department on what type of agreements or assurances that they would give, but that isn't under our purview to be able to deal with stormwater here, so.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, hang on, Dave.
If that were, if Dwayne wanted to pursue that, what department would he go to?
He'd need to contact the public works department. That would be the engineering division.
Engineering division?
Yep.
I think what Dwayne, in addition to this, I think he's concerned about some of the property to the north.
Sure.
As far as the drainage to that. Now, engineering would have a layout for that?
Yeah, and like I said, I believe that this is part of a regional BMP, which would, they would have the plans on file then for that. If it is not, these properties are, to the north, have been constructed in the last, you know, couple of years, four or five years, so that, and they were under the engineering standards that they would have to retain or detain all stormwater on their site, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dave, can you remind us when those BMP standards were put into effect? Because that's been just within the last few years? Four years?
Four years ago.
Okay. So that's, that's not a process that's been around for a long time, but it's, it's the current process that the city has to do retention and to do the best that it can to protect.
Yes, yep.
Sure, Don.
When we started developing Granite Valley, we provided, we donated seven acres to the city of Sioux Falls and built a big deep hole there. And we also dedicated about an acre and a half of land that takes it from Mr. Spader's property right to the hole. Because what Mr. Spader may or may not realize, that about 1,000 acres of that that goes across his property comes south of the interstate and comes north into our property and into this hole that we built that overflows over into Cliff Avenue. So all I'm saying is, is that, Mr., we don't have anything flowing toward Mr. Spader. All of his water flows across our property. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to close public testimony on item 23 and look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the rezone listed as item 23.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 23 is recommended for approval. Item 24 has been deferred. That's a rezone from the AG Air Culture District to the C4 Plant Commercial District for allowed uses at East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue. Again, that's been deferred until the next meeting. Our next item is item 25, a major amendment in subareas G, I, and J. Three Fountain Plaza Plan Development District to change subarea boundaries and to change allowed uses in SubArea G and J from residential to office at north side of West 85th Street, South... in subarea G and J from residential to office at north side of West 85th Street, south of Southwestern Avenue. Staff report.
This is a recent plan development district that you've seen and approved, both in terms of zoning and subdivision. Basically, in additional neighborhood meetings, the applicant has decided to allow office uses on lots eight and 10 Block 1, and revise the subarea boundaries in subareas G, I, and J to accommodate those uses, and so that is what is being presented to you this evening. On the one hand, we have subarea regulations in your information packet that add the office uses to be allowed on those particular lots. On the other hand, we have the revised subarea boundaries for subareas G, I, and J to accommodate those developments. Basically, subarea G is a higher density residential, subarea I, also a single-family residential, continued development in the neighborhood, and subarea J, slightly higher density residential use adjacent to this subarea to the east. Final development plans are still required for the office development as it's proposed on those two lots, and the subarea regulation standards that you previously approved will continue to apply. So, the location as determined by the exhibits indicating the revised subarea boundaries and the location of the lots constitute the approval process this evening, and because they've had a neighborhood meeting on October 8th, 2008, a report by the applicant to staff indicates neighborhood support, staff is recommending approval with the revised documents to be published, which would be revised subarea regulations, a revised concept plan exhibit, a revised parking table exhibit, and a revised initial development plan exhibit. Those will be republished in our zoning ordinance and would be assurance to the neighborhood that that's indeed what would happen to those properties. We've had no calls from neighbors, and that concludes staff reporting.
Questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Hello again, Robert Nats, 2505 South Poplar Drive, Sioux Falls. Here to answer any questions? I will just volunteer this, during the neighborhood meeting that Steve indicated, this was something that the neighborhood actually asked us to request on their behalf. I think they've had a change of heart in terms of an office zoning being a good neighbor for them, so we're happy to make that request on their behalf.
Any questions? Thank you, Bob. Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 25? If not, is there a commission action?
Make a motion to approve item number 25 for a major amendment.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? The fact that there's not a bunch of neighbors here speaks if they're in support of it. All right, item 25, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 25 is recommended for approval. Item 26 is a conditional use permit in the AGA Culture District to allow sand and gravel quarry at 5020 East Rice Street. Staff report.
This is an item that was deferred at the last planning commission meeting. The purpose was to allow the applicant time to meet with an adjacent property owner, principally the Great Bear recreational facility and the Parks and Rec Department, concerning the possible impacts of the conditional use to allow mining and reclamation on the subject property to the Great Bear facility. On October 8th, the applicant and the owner met with representatives of Great Bear on the property to discuss those proposed improvements and any conditions for approval that would be, seem to be appropriate. The applicant followed up by submitting revised mining and reclamation plan, and that's included in the information packets you received, and it's indicated in this report with new information and revised information being indicated in bold letters or bold type, and I'll just quickly summarize those for this 25-acre site. A paper copy of the proposed mining plan was revised, indicating Phase 3 is mainly the transition area that is to be terraced for the trans, transition into the existing adjacent property. The proposed reclamation plan now is typed into the main documents and is presented on the screen. All available topsoil encountered would be salvaged for placement on the reclaimed slopes as part of that plan. These are notes that have been included in the reclamation plan since the last time you saw it. The site reclamation plan shall consist of, as described, with terraces, maximum slopes of 1 to 3, and 8 to 10-foot wide benches in the Phase 3 area to transition the upper grade change and provide for surface water drainage where required, and that no mining should take place within 40 feet of the western south property line of the adjacent Great Bear Recreation Area. This 40-foot buffer was reserved for slope transition only, and where the transition is not required, the area would remain undisturbed, which was a concern of aesthetics for Great Bear. Erosion prevention measures necessary to stabilize the immediate area would be employed, and the terracing should continue through Phases 1 and 2 areas to the point where they intersect with the depth of the mined area, which according to the plan only gets down to the elevation of Rice Street. They've provided now a typical cross-section of the property to be terraced, indicating the location of tree buffers at the top of the site in that transition area, and also up at the 40-foot buffer, and those are indicated on the screen, and also on the plan, which we can't show at the same time, but it's on the site plan for the reclamation. Again, the typical cross-section indicates 1 to 3 slopes with maximum 8 to 10-foot bench areas between each slope, and again, the majority of the area that has been disturbed by mining operations would be sloped to the west and northwest at 1 to 3% slopes, with some hills and swales being retained for their rock outcroppings and natural terrain. A lot of that doesn't show up on the plan, but it's described here, and staff is satisfied that it is describing a reclamation that conforms to the site as they will encounter it for mining. They propose a more rapid growing rye grass stabilization was a concern, surplus topsoil from other owner project sites are proposed to be hauled to the site and used for additional material in stabilization. They also indicate temporary erosion control and the potential for significant erosion being abated by these temporary measures. Should slope erosion become a problem, the owner has agreed to implement the use of either natural or synthetic erosion control measures, including seed blankets anchored in place to help establish sufficient vegetation and control the erosion. The reclamation area is to be monitored, that's a new facet of the plan, and maintained for a period of two to three years after the reclamation is completed to ensure that premature erosion of the slopes does not occur, and finally, the future land use for the area, again, is unknown, and they are not proposing anything at this time. Reclamation Plan Review Team item is a new item. The owner is willing to host the City Reclamation Plan Review Team from time to time to review progress on the mining operation and the reclamation and the effectiveness. The team would be tasked with providing a report to the Planning Department as it deems modifications are necessary. Scheduling of inspections are to be coordinated with and attended by the owner of the property or their representative. Also, if it becomes apparent that the mining operation is having significant adverse impact on the, on the Great Bear facility in terms of blowing sand, dust, dirt, and so on, immediate action will be taken by the property owner to rectify the situation to the satisfaction of Great Bear Recreation Park Incorporated and the Sioux Falls Park Board. If the owner is unable to rectify the situation, mining operations shall be halted until the problem is corrected. And finally, the newest item to the reclamation plan is a security management plan. This was requested by the Police and Fire Department in terms of site security management, and four measures are indicated being proposed by the applicant, including access security gate posts and chains with private property no trespassing signs at the entrance off Rice Street. The gate may be closed but not locked to provide access to emergency vehicles. They will install security lights at locations where vehicles are parked. Keys for heavy onsite equipment will be kept in lock boxes on the site, and along the east property line, they will install a two-wire or three-wire fence, now I guess it is, on steel fence posts with no trespassing signs, placed at reasonable spacing to ensure they can be seen, and that's to prevent inadvertent access from recreational use of the Great Bear site. Finally, the applicant is going to be required to meet all yard and setback requirements, including parking, paving of parking lots. The 25-foot setback is minimum along Rice Street, and a rear yard landscaped area will be provided if Maple Street is extended from the east. That pretty much concludes the revised report from last time. Since that time and included in your addendum are additional correspondence between the applicant and the Great Bear representatives concerning each one of these recommendations and considerations. I believe the applicant and Great Bear representatives are here this evening to present to you the final results of their meetings and agreements, if there are any, so that you can better judge as to what conditions are required to grant approval to this conditional use. Otherwise, we've had no contact from any other property owners in the area or concerned citizens, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair. Steve, in Great Bear had submitted a comments where the applicant responded to. I haven't looked through the addendum yet, but one that the owner is not in favor of was a buffer area being increased from 40 to 75 feet.
Yes.
Do you know what the rationale was, or from Great Bear's viewpoint, as to why 75 instead of 40?
I would rather that they speak to that.
Very good. They requested a four-foot black vinyl chain link fence, and the owner is not in favor of that. Any thought process as to why they requested a black chain link?
Actually, that's gone back and forth in correspondence several times, and I have information here that you don't have in your addendum, so I, I don't think I should speak to it, I think we'll just let them do that.
Very good, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Steve, as part of your recommendation, are you still including the, the two stipulations with the A to L documentation per, because I, my question is relative to L, where it states that the applicant shall be responsible for any physical or operational damage to property Great Bear. I'm not sure that it's our place to put a legal or financial burden into this stipulation piece of what we're doing here tonight. I question that, I just need you to explain that to me.
I put that in there at the request of the Great Bear folks and their attorney, and I have referred it to the city attorney for an opinion as to whether it's enforceable or not. I did, as of the time of this meeting, I haven't received a reply on that. I expect to have a reply shortly.
Just the wording of it, you know, to me, I mean, I understand why it's part of the information, but for us to put it within our stipul, there's nothing in there that this body has any right to enforce or any remedy.
I would advise, if that's your opinion, that you excluded from the conditions for approval then.
Steve, wouldn't it be more prudent for Great Bear and the mining operation to have a site agreement of their own, including some of those legal issues?
Oh, that's done typically a lot of times in other types of development around town where they have private covenants and deed restrictions and maybe even easements between property owners to accommodate the situation between them. Those are not enforceable by the city, though.
Right.
Which is why I feel that if that's a part of the agreement between them, then that's a part of the agreement between them, and you don't have to stipulate that as a condition for approval.
I don't feel that, I agree with Andy, I don't feel that the planning commission has any jurisdiction over that, but from a personal standpoint, I think that what they're shooting for is a reasonable thing, but I think that agreement needs to be between them.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, Eric Willardson, Willardson on Engineering, 902 South Cleveland Avenue. Here tonight representing Harold Gayden, the owner of the property, Mr. Gayden is also present tonight. Appreciate this board's opportunity here, giving us the opportunity to work out our issues with the Park Board and the Great Bear people over the last 30 days. We think we've come up with a solution that answers everyone's questions and everyone's problems. I guess I'd like to address some of those issues that you have tonight, and also initiate some changes to the plan that both Park Board and Great Bear and Mr. Gayden have agreed to in order to gain their approval of the plan and then hopefully your approval of the conditional use permit. In those recommendations that you received, 1, 2, and I through L, as Steve has indicated, we did provide a site security plan. Mr. Gayden worked with the Sioux Falls Police Department, I think it was Officer Greg Schmidt, that worked through the plan with him and addressed the concerns that they would have with site security. Number two was to revise the mining and reclamation plan, which we have done and it's gone back several times. I guess I would ask that I could go through these items with you and indicate what we have agreed to and what the plan would entail that then is agreeable by all parties. Number one, they asked we provide for some additional verification and some additional expertise. Mr. Gayden has hired Tetra Tech and specifically Mr. Bruce Card, who is also here tonight. He's been a geotechnical engineer for over 30 years, and he will also be assisting with the reclamation plan and overseeing the reclamation and the mining work on the property. B, was reclamation of Phase 1 be implemented immediately following the completion? The Parks Department and Great Bear have provided us with some additional language that they would like to see included in the plan. For the record, I can read that tonight if you'd like, I just, I think I should, that way it's on the record and it will be added to the plan. The plan will read, "As mining activity progresses through each phase, disturbed areas where mining has been completed will be finish graded, and stabilization measures such as seeding, mulching, fiber seed mat material, or similar devices shall be installed. A qualified soils consultant acceptable to the Reclamation Plan Review Team shall be secured by the owner to review the proposed plan detail for stabilization and reclamation for each phase prior to implementation. Recommendations of the consultant will be considered within the final plan implementation." The owner's agreed to that, we will insert those wording into the reclamation plan and will become a part of the plan. C, the three, three to four-foot trees planted, six feet apart, that was agreed to, it is on the plan, and noted, so they're fine with that. Establishment. D was- D was establishment of the reclamation plan review team. We did add into the reclamation plan the requirement to set this team up that would be members of the Parks Board, representatives, Parks staff, Great Bear staff, and also a member of the owner or a designated representative of his. That reclamation plan review team, it's agreed, and it's made a part of the plan that they will meet on the site and on no less than a yearly basis to review the processes that are going on, and if there are any changes, as Steve indicated, to make a report back to the planning department and to you, if there are changes that they see that they want made to the operation as it progresses. E, the buffer increasing from 40 to 75 feet, that has since been rescinded by the Parks with the addition of the soils engineer and his agreement to look at it. He did visit the site this week with myself and Mr. Gaden. We did walk the site, went over the plan with him, and that requirement to extend it to 75 feet has since been taken out, so we would like to delete E. It will remain at a 40-foot buffer as the plan indicates. F, the four-foot black vinyl fence, there's also been an agreement. We proposed a three-wire non-barbed fence to delineate the property. Since then, and just tonight, we've agreed to install some split-rail cedar fence in some areas where they're more visible to the patrons of Great Bear, and that those locations will be worked out and exactly where the trees will be planted will be approved by the Great Bear staff and the Parks and Recreation Department. That also is a part of the plan now, the reclamation plan. So instead of the black vinyl fence, it will be split-rail cedar fence at their locations that they're choosing and in agreement with Mr. Gaden, and also maybe some other types of fencing in areas that can't be seen by the public that are using that system. We didn't think a chain link fence was appropriate for the area. It prevents certain types of animals from crossing freely between the properties, and it is a nature area, and there is a need for that, so we didn't want to prohibit that. And I think the Parks Department is okay with that. So we do want to revise the fencing note from the black vinyl chain link to a split-rail cedar fence. G, the applicant owner implement the reclamation plan prior to any change of property ownership. That statement was added to the plan, so we're okay with that. H, we're okay with. I is defined in the plan. I guess everything else in there is acceptable to the owner, and language to the effect of all these comments has been added to the reclamation plan, like you said. The only thing we need to add is the statement we worked out tonight with the Parks Department, and that will be added to this plan and approved by them, so that they're in agreement that that's to be approved. If you'd like to add a stipulation that says that the plan will be modified to include this information and approved by the Park Board or the Parks staff, we're fine with that as well. As far as the insurance, Mr. Gaden certainly carries insurance for damage to other properties. He carries a liability insurance policy with his company should a catastrophic failure occur. We certainly don't anticipate that. The soils engineer would probably back... We'll back that up, that the likelihood of a catastrophic failure over here is very remote. If we do see signs of failure out there, it will happen as erosion from the surface up, and we'd be able to identify that and stop that and remedy it before any further mining or reclamation took place. As for whether or not you have the authority, I guess at that point, if there was a catastrophic failure, either Mr. Gaden's insurance would take care of it, or he would likely be sued to provide that. So I think you're right. That's probably a matter for the courts. With that, I guess, we're, like I said, we're willing to do and work with the Parks Department to whatever extent they need to, to make sure that this operation doesn't... isn't detrimental to the operation of the Great Bear Recreation Area. With that, I guess I would just answer any questions that you might have with the changes to the plan.
Questions for Eric?
Mr. Chair. The mining and reclamation plan, is that an operating document? Is it legal in nature, or is it a binding agreement between the owner and Great Bear and the Parks Department?
It's not a binding agreement. As no one signs it, it is an engineering document that I stamp and sign. It is required by the mining permit that he has, that he has a reclamation plan in place, and they're a formal plan that's prepared by an engineer. So I guess in that respect, we absolutely... He needs to follow that reclamation plan, and if he's not, or if the reclamation plan review team sees some issues out there that maybe aren't going as planned or are a little bit different than what we're expecting, we can remedy that, change the plan. Like I said, they can bring a report back to you that says, hey, we need to change something here, and...
So basically, a statement within that mining and reclamation plan that calls for the fiscal responsibility for the fiscal and operational damage really does kind of connect them to Great Bear and the park system in terms of any catastrophic or financial damages that may occur?
And they haven't in so many words said, you know, said any kind of that we'll pay you if anything happens kind of thing, but essentially, the way that works, and Mr. Gaden has experienced with this before, if his operation causes someone damages, he's responsible for it. An example he had given is one of his excavating crews had cut a power line that shut down a plant for a couple of days. His insurance company had to pay for the lost time on that plant for the time they were down. So they say there are avenues in whether or not, you know, he didn't need to be sued for his insurance company to see, yep, they were damaged and we're insuring you and we cover that.
Eric, I'm just curious, who... What body oversees this reclamation plan? Is that the Department of Natural Resources?
I believe, yes, in the Mining Division in the Department of Environment and Natural Resources at the state.
I mean, is this plan filed with the Department of Natural Resources?
No, it is not.
So how do they know it's in effect?
Their mining permit requires him to have an approved reclamation plan or a reclamation plan produced by a registered engineer for the reclamation of the site. The mining department also inspects the site, so it's not just... The state of South Dakota mining people also inspect the site for the reclamation. It's not just left up to the Parks Department.
No, but that's what I'm saying. So this plan is given to the Department of Natural Resources and the Mining Division or...
It will, yes. We will send it to them as soon as all the detail and everybody's good with it, they will get a copy.
Okay, so they oversee this plan?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Other questions for Eric?
I have one. What is your estimated timetable on the different phases?
What's the economy going to do? We estimated simply maybe three to four, five years for Phase One. It's really based on the conditions in Sioux Falls. The sand that he's going to use out of this is for construction projects in the city of Sioux Falls. It's where it will be used. It will progress as the market allows it, I guess, and if the market falls apart, it may never load... You know, but if, when we feel very confident it's going to come back, we expect 10 to 12 years is what we're anticipating right now, but it's really dictated by market conditions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 26?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dave Fisher, I'm the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and appreciate having the opportunity to be here to address this issue again. I agree with what Eric has said. There's been a lot of discussion right up until about 20 after 7:00 tonight on a couple of issues that we were still going back and forth on. I believe all the issues and concerns that our review team has had have been alleviated by the applicant. The thing that we don't have yet is that we don't have the revised mining and reclamation plan in hand yet with the changes made. So I think our only concern is that those changes get made according to what we now have agreed on, both verbally and some of it through a process of emails here over the last week or so. So I guess my... Maybe my only suggestion, and I would certainly defer to the expertise of the commission and also the planning department, but perhaps a condition that would be placed on this would be that the mining and reclamation plan would be approved by Parks and Recreation, and then we can envelop all of the rest of these issues within the mining and reclamation plan.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, I do have a question for you. I'm really kind of curious as to why that buffer area was pulled back to 40 feet instead of 75 feet, which you had originally requested.
We requested it go to 75 because of the planting of the three rows of cedar trees. We were asking that they be 12 feet apart, and what our understanding was, was that it would start at our property line, and it would go 12 feet before the first row, and then another 12 before the second row, and another 12. So that would give you basically 36 feet already taken up, basically to the trunk of the tree in that third row, so that if that's where the terracing started and someone wandered through the trees, there would be no... I mean, it could... It would be the start of the three-to-one slope that's there, and so that's why we were requesting that it be moved out to 70 feet. What the applicant has... What we've agreed to with the applicant is that we believe that those tree plantings can start within six feet of the property line, which buys us some buffer zone beyond that third row, and then with the incorporation of the split-rail fence, which will be much more aesthetic than a wire fence, and the signage that I think we've done our job to do, you know, kind of due diligence as far as providing for safety of patrons at Great Bear that may wander, you know, wander on the hill there.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion that we approve the conditional use permit. I'm not sure exactly how the stipulation should be worded, except to say that, I'm guessing, and help me here, Steve, that it needs to be with stipulation number one, the site security management plan is in place and approved by police and fire, and that number two can actually be changed to say that an updated reclamation plan submitted to the planning department for review and approval by Parks, Rec., and Planning and Zoning to incorporate the new agreement or language. Is that all we need?
Right. I think that that would work. The only other notes that I had taken, based on the items that you had in your report, the first one, requesting additional verification was responded to by actually hiring a consultant. So the consultant is in place. I guess you don't need to stipulate that that happened, and that's part of the reclamation plan that would be approved by Parks and Rec. So I don't think we need that one. All of the other items there were indicated being included in the plan to be approved by Parks and Rec, except that I was struggling a little bit with item F, and that would be the fence, design, location, materials, things that were all still kind of up in the air. So in my mind, I was thinking a master plan, a master plan for fencing that property line. But again, that's going to be part of the plan to be approved, revised plan to be approved by Parks and Rec.
That should be something that can be, for the most part, indicated on the drawing.
Yep.
And then item I, I'd be surprised if the city attorney would...
L?
L, or excuse me, L, would think that's something that should be a part of this.
Right, and I've scratched that already.
I think there are other remedies for the Park District, Great Bear people, but why don't we also say then that we still want to wait until you get that ruling from the attorney's office and make sure both parties understand where that's at? I do want to commend both the applicant and the Park District, Great Bear Inc., for taking the time to work. It sounds and looks to me like there has been a lot of ground covered in the last 30 days, so thank you.
So that's your motion?
Yes, and don't ask me to repeat it.
I'll second the motion.
All right. There's a motion and a second with a bunch of revised, and Steve got that, and it's part of the record. Is there any further commission discussion? If not, on item 26, the conditional use permit with the revised stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 26 is recommended for approval. Item 27 is a conditional use permitted in the RS2 Residential District to allow a church without frontage on an arterial or collector street at 701 South Garfield Avenue. Staff report, please.
This item is also deferred at the last planning commission meeting on October 1st to allow time for the applicant and neighbors to meet and come to an understanding as to what's being proposed and what the conditions could be for approval of the project. The applicant has provided in your addendum this evening, new information, revised site plan indicating the required parking and how that would be improved on the site, revised floor plans to indicate the improvements being made inside the building, and a report on a neighborhood meeting, including the attendance at that meeting of 20-some people. The report that you have in front of you this evening stays the same. I know that the applicant has represented, as well as neighbors, to present their comments on the neighborhood meeting and what they understand the proposal is and how it might be approved with conditions. Staff is recommending approval, has not indicated any conditions for approval on its recommendation, and that concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, I have a question on... In that area, Kiwanis and Western are arterial streets. What are the collector streets?
If you go south, I guess 18th Street is probably the main collector there, and you would come by Kenwood Manor to come out of that general area where the street is. I know, because I used to live there.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. All the objects, 105 North Hall...
I'll object, it's 105 North Hall in Sioux Falls, and I'm representing the Slime Community of South Dakota. Steve has said that we appeared before the Planning Commission a month ago, and our request for a conditional use license has been deferred pending our meeting with the neighborhood. We have a neighborhood meeting that we have neglected to do before, and that conditional use permit has been to use our house as a house of worship, and at that time several owners of the homes in the area have appeared and they have objected issues of that permit. Among the other complaints, the main complaints were paving the backyard for parking and changing the exterior of the house so that if we outgrew it and began worship in a larger building, this one would not be able to be used as a single-family home anymore. The Commission asked us to have a meeting with the neighborhood and to also to see what we can do for our options as far as the parking for our Friday prayers, because there was a good suggestion presented at the Planning Commission meeting. We did set up a meeting in the community room at Oyadi Community Center for, at 7:00 PM on October 21st, so two weeks ago, and we had delivered notices around 30, 35 notices to the least one block radius around our property. About 20 people other than our members have attended the meeting. We had five members present, including myself, and we did pass around the sign-in sheet, and on that sign-in sheet, I asked the neighbors to put at least an address if they wanted to put a name, they sure couldn't do that. We had 12 different addresses and four people signed the sheet, and if you guys want to see the sheet, I'm going to provide that to you. And we explained why we, how we intend to use the property and what we intend to do with the property. And we also said that we have obtained the verbal agreement from the principal of Garfield High School, Garfield Elementary School, to allow us the use of the west end of the parking lot for our Friday prayers. And just want to add, we did not receive the verbal agreement immediately. We asked for it, then we, I had mentioned last time, we were using Oyadi Community Center for our Friday prayers, at 1:00 PM, from 1:00 to 1:30 or so, and when we asked the principal for permission, we were saying, you know, well, let me think about it, something like that. Then next time, we found out that the principal actually went out to check the parking lot while we had the services to see the occupancy of that area. And then when we approached the principal, the next time, we were told that we can use that area just for that time slot, no problems unless there's need for, I mean, for the city to use it. And we did obtain the long-term agreement from Oyadi Community Center with a list of the Fridays that we can use that room. We have all the way up to May 8th, and we, there's several Fridays that I have excluded from that, from that schedule, so I have that list if somebody is willing to take a look at that, too. And we also explained to the neighbors that we are intention to, we have no intention to change the look of the house. I mean, we want to make it better. Siding is falling apart, we'll fix it. If gathers need to be fixed, we will fix them, and just to maintain the house in the proper manner. That we also explained that inside the house, we have drywall painted and the old single-stall garage, painted the interior walls, took, put some prayer rugs on the floor, and did some upkeep of the property, and also we have one room that used to be, well, it used to be a bedroom, we have converted it into a library, we put the shelves and the books and all that stuff there. At the end of the meeting, we offered all the neighbors to tour the house to see what we have done, and unfortunately, only two of the neighbors have accepted us in our offer to visit the property, to see inside what has been happening. And we know that several neighbors have raised an issue that the increase in traffic is, it's already congested area. I think we have solved our Friday, our main concern for heavy traffic is Friday when we have our Friday prayer, and I have been solved with this verbal agreement from the principal of the Garfield Elementary, and we believe that we do not have caused any issues to the traffic. And with that said, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, the agreement that you have with the Oyadi Center, when would you see yourself utilizing that facility versus your facility?
Honestly, if we could get a conditional use permit to fix our facility, to get it to the court, to everything the city requires us to do, I wish we could do it next week. But that's why we secured this long-term agreement from Oyadi, so we have a place to pray at, till we work on our building, till we bring everything up to court.
So you see this as sort of a process that you're in, because you do have a number of conformance issues to meet the building code for the use that you're...
I know we have, we have to meet American Disability Act.
Yeah, ADA.
And all those codes I mean. I'm not a court person, so...
Me either.
Yeah. But we know, that's why we went out to secure a place for us, because we want to pray on Fridays, and how do we do it? Well, we got this list of Fridays when we can do it.
So is it practical that there is a period of time where you will not be using the house for prayer until you meet code?
Honestly, my personal opinion, no, not, to me personally, it's not. I want to, Argus Leader approached us, you know, and I told the reporter last time, my heart aches that I have to go to Oyadi Community Center to pray when we have a building to pray. To me, that was like, you have a church, but somebody tells you you cannot go to the church and pray. And just from that aspect, I'm glad that we have a place to pray at. Is the best, is that the number one option, in my personal opinion? Obviously, no. Number one option would be 701 South Dakota.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
How long had you been looking for a place of worship before you selected this particular house?
Actively, we started sometime past summer, past fall, August.
Had you been looking at commercial buildings, office buildings, other houses like this?
We have, and we either, we found the properties that were not, the area that, around the property, I mean, we were talking about our parking lot, the houses that we looked at did not have any backyard where we could put a car or two cars, let alone more than that. And we were looking around for some commercial properties. Whenever we looked at, we just, there was no, I mean, at that time, the money was an issue for us, and we could not look at something that was under $50,000.
Were you ever informed, or were you ever made aware of the fact that you couldn't just buy a house in a residential neighborhood and start a church without a conditional use permit?
We were working with them, we had a real estate agent when we bought the property, and we were under impression that that property could be used, that it's zoned, that where church could be placed into that area, residential area. So that's why we went with, we proceeded with buying that property.
Were you ever made aware of the fact that to do some remodel on it and such like that, that you would need permits?
We, no, I mean, we, we have permits to, whenever we did a remodel, we have, we had a permit, you know, from the city to, when we were, as I stated, we were remodeling our garage, we have a permit for that, and it's still, as a matter of fact, it's...
Did you obtain those permits before you started work?
Yep. Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 27?
My name's Gerold Folkerts, it's F-O-L-K-E-R-T-S. The first name is Gerold, G-A-R-O-L-D. My wife Sandra and I live at 700 South Williams Avenue and are directly to the rear of 701 South Garfield, the property. The question, we've lived at this residence for 38 years. On October 1st, I came before this commission in opposition to the conditional use permit, and our position has not changed. I will give just a very brief review of our points. You probably remember the longer scenario that I gave last time. The number one point that I'd like to reiterate is that property is a very small, family home in need of a lot of repair and has been sold for several years. To turn this into an acceptable meeting place for numerous people, in my opinion, would be difficult, if not impossible. To put an acceptable parking lot into the small backyard would be difficult and would cause hardship to the adjoining properties. In our opinion, a parking lot in the backyard would be aesthetically detrimental and would appear out of place in a residential neighborhood, such as the one we live in. We also would argue that our properties would be devalued. On October 21st, my wife and I attended a neighborhood meeting that was requested by the applicants. We want to state at this point, this is my wife and myself, very clearly that religion plays no part in our opposition to this project. We would encourage the applicants to worship as they see fit and to prosper in their religious endeavors, but feel very strongly that this small, single-family dwelling is not the proper place. I'm referring to 701 Garfield. We learned at the meeting that we attended at the Garfield School that the parking lot as originally proposed now is questionable. We learned that the lot would be expensive and that the worshippers could park in the Garfield School parking lot, and at the time we departed the meeting, we were left with that impression that they would be parking there if possible. Neighbors at the meeting questioned if this would be acceptable, both to this council and to the city. We learned that a wall had been removed from the home and the garage had been converted into a meeting hall. The meeting was well-attended, and opposition by the neighbors was, in my opinion overwhelmingly, and voiced very soundly. We heard about the fine industrious character of the applicants and have no reason to believe otherwise. In conclusion, my wife and I feel strongly about this issue, but our strongest opposition is the parking lot that was initially proposed that would be adjoining our backyard. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Gerold?
Gerold, Mr. Chair, I wonder if we could see a show of hands of neighbors that are here that want to speak either in favor or against the church?
We'll have a few more come up. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Sarda, and the last name is spelled C-A-R-D-A. My address is 704 South Williams, and I could not hear the applicant when he was speaking, so I may cover some of the things that he said. My concern, at the last time I was here at this meeting, and also I did attend the neighborhood meeting, my concern is property values. I've worked very hard and very long to purchase my home, and I do not want something put in the neighborhood that's going to devalue my property. I have, so that you might be familiar with my area and also with the applicant property, I have brought pictures of both my house and those, and I'll lay those there if anyone would like to take a look at them. The pictures of my property were taken probably about in July, and after I had done some new landscaping. The pictures of the applicant property was taken on November 3rd, the date I had these developed. I did go through the, after the neighborhood meeting, I was one of the people that went through the interior of the house. In my opinion, the property would not be able to be resold as a single-family dwelling again. They have removed all of the kitchen appliances, such as the cabinets, the sink, the, you know, whatever makes a kitchen. The one room that they're now using for a library, I don't, I can't imagine that that was a bedroom before, it's a very small room, but they've taken out all the interior walls except for that, so that they have adequate meeting space, and what are they going to do with that property when they outgrow it? My concern also would be the parking lot. I don't know what the position is of the parking lot at the meeting that was kind of like, well, it's taken off the table type of thing, because they were going to use the school parking lot. So is it safe to assume, then, that any school in Sioux Falls would be subject to use of a parking lot for whatever type of meeting, whatever type of, whatever type of thing is going on anywhere in the neighborhood? So that two blocks away, if somebody wanted to develop another church, would they also be able to use the same school parking lot or any other school parking lot in Sioux I guess that pretty much covers my concerns.
All right, any questions for Jeannie?
Jeannie, thank you for the comments. I think you bring up a good point about a public school parking lot, is that cart launch being able to be used by anybody at any time? I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that.
I was going to wait until after we had a motion and asked Teresa if she could comment on that.
No, Teresa.
I believe that they would need permission from Buildings and Grounds, the school district, to have, to be able to park on that facility, and where there's a community center, it's a joint effort between the city and the school, so they would need permission from that entity also, I believe.
So if they were able to get permission, then any school in Sioux Falls would be able to get the same?
They, each organization would need to contact that school.
I see, okay. And that would come from the superintendent, or who would that come from?
It would come from the Buildings and Grounds.
I see, okay.
Teresa, could you, as a principal, give permission for somebody to use the parking lot like we're proposing?
If it was a single event, but if it was an ongoing event, I would want to make sure that it was correct with our Buildings and Grounds facility, because we have a capacity at that parking lot, and we have to make sure we can meet the needs of our building. And with a community center there, I believe they would have, to make sure they can meet that, depending on the meetings. And I know you referenced talking to Dr. Jeffers regarding that, so I would believe that she had checked that out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Hustlerlid. I'm at 701 South Williams Avenue. That would be across the street from Gary's house. The one thing I wanted to bring up was, I did attend the meeting, and I went there fully expecting to see a set of drawings. I wanted to see what they planned to do. How are they going to convert this from a single-family house into a church or a house of worship? There were no drawings. Tonight on the screen was the first opportunity that I ever had to see any of the drawings, other than a red line set that I saw down at City Hall one time, and it was never given to me to sit down and look at it. So I can't even judge whether this would be detrimental to my house or my property, say yes or no. I don't think it's been presented to the neighbors in a way that we can actually make a decision. I'd like to ask you to defer this action tonight, so that we can be shown what they plan to do with the property. I don't know, I might say, hey, you know, that isn't going to affect me, but right now I don't have that information, and that's all I'm asking for, is a chance to see what they want to do with the property. Any questions?
Questions, Kevin?
Maybe just a little confusion, because we actually had a set of interior plans last month at the meeting.
They were not brought to the neighborhood meeting.
Were you here last month?
Yes, I was.
Yes, you was.
And they were shown on the screen for a brief few seconds, and you cannot see what's happening while they're flashing through them on the screen.
Just for future reference, that's public information, so you could call city and get a copy of that.
What I actually saw last week was the city of the, the plan that the city had for the parking lot only, on the screen.
Okay.
No floor plan.
So you, do you currently have a copy of this plan? Have you seen... Have you seen a copy of this plan?
No.
Thank you.
We're willing to provide a copy of the plans if we have to. I mean, that's, the plan has not been an issue. You know, we have provided to the city and we can provide a copy to everyone that wants a copy, you know. But Mr. Kevin, I apologize, I did not get your last name, you know. We offered, Kevin was making statements in neighborhood meeting about the property, about code, about zoning, the same thing that we were just talking about. He has experienced it being in construction, I do not. But my concern is that Kevin was making a statement without, he just said, without looking at the plan, without looking what's inside the property, he was making a judgment on how we want to use and why do we need a conditional use permit, you know. If I, I have copies of the plan right here, if you want me, I can give that out to Kevin right now, so.
If you could stay for just a minute, and this question might be part to you and part to staff, I'm, I'm kind of getting the indication that when you purchased the property, your real estate agent or whoever that you worked with maybe didn't share with you the process that you were going to have to go through to get this building to code, conditional use permit, to use, your intent was always to use it as a church or a house of worship?
Right, we never want to use it as a...
So you never went into this situation understanding that or negotiating that as part of your buy-sell agreement on the homes?
Correct.
Okay. So the agreements that you have for parking, would that, is it your position right now that you'll make the renovations to the house that you need to make to get to the building code, but you'll use that parking situation? And maybe this is more for staff, but can they be in compliance without completing the parking lot situation if they have a, I mean, I know they have a verbal agreement now, but if they had a written or documented agreement? Is the parking lot optional, I guess is what I'm trying to get to?
The parking is required for the use. If it's not going to be provided onsite, they need a variance in order to provide it elsewhere.
So they would need to take this verbal agreement that they currently have, get it into a written agreement and go to the variance board and get that variance?
That's right.
And then potentially they could occupy the site with just the home renovations, but not the parking lot renovation?
They can't occupy it for assembly use until they have the parking situation taken care of.
Whether it be through variance or whether it be through construction onsite?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm kind of confused. Has that decision been made then? Are you or are you not planning to do the parking lot onsite?
In order for us to use the place as a house of worship, it's my understanding that we have to have a parking spot, parking built, so...
But you can have the alternative option across the street in the school parking lot?
If we can get a variance, okay, if we can get that from the Buildings and Grounds and if that's the solution for everybody, we will not convert that into parking lot if that's the option that everybody agrees on.
Because it seems to me like that is one of the biggest objections from the neighbors is looking at this parking lot in your backyard.
And, I mean, I completely understand their concern, you know. Who was it that said once, I disagree with what you say, but I will defend that, your right to say it, you know? And, I mean, I want neighbors to be concerned, but if you drive around the city on any Sunday, if you have, if you go to eight o'clock mass, go around 10 o'clock, every church, parkings are filled, streets are filled next to the church. Lots of churches, I draw by a couple that are single-family residents, they have parking lot, it's just a gravel, half size of our backlot. And there was three cars in that parking lot and there was like another 20 cars on the streets, both sides of the streets. It's also in the corner lot. So if we can find a solution for a parking lot, if we can get that variance from Buildings and Grounds, whatever it takes for us to use that property, we just want to be able to use the property, so...
Sure.
I mean, I guess our options, our options are we build a parking lot and find it, we talk to the school to get that for Friday. Friday service is our busiest time. Other time, if we get a couple of people, we get a couple of people any other time. But so, that was the biggest traffic issue.
Okay, thank you. Was there one more person that wanted to speak?
My name is Joe Michali, 421 South Garfield. Michali spelled M-I-C-H-A-E-L-I. My concern is, like the other people, we're not really thinking that this is the right place for what they want to do. I know it was brought up, it's been in the paper, that religion was an issue. It wasn't an issue from the neighbors. The one that kept instilling the religion issue was their own attorney. Okay? So then we go to the parking. My other concern is, what happens when the school has functions and they're having their mosques, their meetings, and the school functions? Does this supersede the school functions for the parents, tri-states, stuff like that when the parking lot's used? There's times when, I live about two blocks north, right off corner of 12th and Garfield. My granddaughters go to school there. There's times that I have to park a half a block away to pick them up from school, after school, at 3:15, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So now if we're utilizing other parking spots, when the parking lots are full for a church, is this fair to our kids that go to the school there? Is it fair to their parents? You know, I'm just concerned, do they meet the codes? Do they have to have a handicap bathroom in this facility to bring it up to codes? What's it going to cost them? Do they have the money to make it up to code standards per city ordinance? I know if I was to build a business place in town, there's ordinances that I have to comply with, with bathrooms, parking, landscaping, underground sprinkler systems. There's a whole gamut of stuff. And my concern is, do they have to do the same thing that other businesses or other organizations have to do?
Any questions for Joe?
I think maybe just a comment. I appreciate your concerns, you know, we've spoken to the zoning officer about this and absolutely I think that's what he's telling you, is that they're telling him he cannot occupy this structure until he gets to code.
Okay, then what happens with, getting back to the parking issue? If the school's full, and right now they're telling us that they only have five people that are going to be involved in this, what happens if it turns into 15, 20? Where do these cars park? There's already been tickets issued on cars parked there already.
And I think the second piece of that equation is it's incumbent on them to do one of two things, either provide the onsite parking or two, get a legal variance to formalize the verbal agreement that they have with the school, that the school is saying that they're not concerned about that issue. I mean, those are the two things that are kind of the big issues right now.
But it's also not fair to the people that are going to the school there if they cannot utilize that school for their children when they have to park there and somebody else is using it.
And I think that's where the legal issue comes in. And if you can get that taken care of that way, then the school district's assuring them there's adequate...
My question was that night to them is, I didn't think that the principal of the school had the authority to give them that permission, that it had to go before at least the school board or the Buildings and Grounds.
And we have no background knowledge on who she talked to regarding that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, we're going to close public testimony on item 27.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the, in the audience that would speak in favor of this?
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of item 27 other than the applicant? Please?
My name is Nuri, Home Islamic Community of South Dakota. We are really thankful all neighbors is coming and complaining. And as we know, you know, we just to start in. We cannot buy outside big land and we didn't have the money. Our intention to be good people, help neighbor, you know, we've tried to be involved with them, not against them or against us. And actually, the property before we buy it, we asked the city and they said, you know, you could have the permit. That's why we went in and we go ahead and buy it. And we didn't find it easy. And this is, right now, it's too big for us. Right now, it's too big for us. When we grow, we move on. And as you know, the life just started. And thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, that'll close public testimony and I look for a commission to action on item 27.
Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I would like to make the motion that we defer this for another 30 days. Based on what I'm hearing, we do need to come to some agreement on how parking is going to be handled. And I think that needs to be formalized and brought back to the commission. I happen to agree with Kevin. We've seen drawings, but it probably wouldn't hurt if we had a, and the neighbors I would think would appreciate this too, if there was a site plan that indicated how this was going to be developed and landscaped. Floor plan and maybe even the elevations. I look at these photos brought in by Jeannie and it indicates that there was some carpentry work done to close the garage. And, you know, it effectively closed the garage, but it looks to me like, and Steve maybe knows more about the details here, that the existing is a shiplap siding and they didn't use a shiplap siding to fill in the garage door. So that just doesn't look right. And there are aesthetic issues that if you would work with somebody, landscape architect or an architect, to get them to put this together in a way that truly demonstrates to the neighbors that you're going to make improvements. You know, the recommendation obviously is if you're going to close in a garage like that, you either fill it with glass or windows or you use the same exact siding and when you're done, nobody can tell that there was ever a garage there. So I think that there are a couple of things that they need to do to better explain what the end product will look like and to also give everyone the assurance that this parking is going to be taken care of. Now, we can spend a lot of time making sure we have parking, but that doesn't make people park in the parking lot, but that's not an issue for this commission, so.
All right, there's a motion to defer item 27 for 30 days.
I second it.
There's a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Meredith, in concept, I agree with the issues that you've put forth as to the things that still need some clarity. You know, my, my thought going into the vote was that we could maybe handle that through a stipulation process where we basically say that, you know, the two stipulations would be that they have to either receive the variance or provide the onsite parking as one stipulation and two, that they had to have the building to code prior to occupancy and that if they could meet those two items, then maybe they wouldn't have to come in front of this board. But I could support your deferral just to allow that, because of the neighborhood, you know, really needing some clarity on some things to allow that to unfold a little bit, so.
Yeah, I, the one thing that we would struggle with, and I think the neighbors would struggle with too, with, if you had a stipulation that just said you get a building permit that doesn't address aesthetics, the guys down at the building code department don't care necessarily. I would be surprised if they care if it's shiplap siding or 12-inch cement board siding that fills in that garage door. But I think it's probably important to the neighbors as to what material is ultimately used for and what color the house is ultimately painted. We need to ask the applicants if they're willing to do this, to take the time and to do this extra work without any guarantee 30 days from now.
My question, Meredith, is in the conditional use process?
What's that?
In the conditional use process or what we're dealing with here, is it our, is it our place to dictate aesthetics and coloration? Is that, is that even going to be what we can do in this process?
I would like to.
I can appreciate that you would like to too, but again, I think we could possibly handle this through some conditions on here. And again, we're up for conditional use permits, so I can, I can go with another 30-day deferral, but I, I do think that there, these issues can be worked out. And I can appreciate that they don't think it's the place for this church, but as a land use issue, it is allowed by land use. And that's our primary concern here and we need to do whatever we can to help the neighborhood put this to rest as well as the property owners. And so in 30 days, I hope we can have it all worked out and we can move on from there for the entire neighborhood's benefit.
It seems to me that the parking lot has been a big issue and I totally understand the couple that live directly behind them not wanting to look out their back door, the windows on the backside of their house and look onto a big pile of cement. I totally understand that. So maybe if we can come to a compromise, or they can come to a compromise on the parking lot, then maybe the rest of it can be made a bit more palatable. So I really think that we do need to defer this. I think that there's still some legwork to be done.
I agree. I believe that parking lot's going to be the biggest challenge and they have some work to do.
I think the biggest issue here is, is this a good place for a church?
How many other churches do we have in residential areas?
Many, 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 many.
Many, but we didn't get to.
The land use issue does say that it's a place for a church.
The question I'd ask, were those churches there first? Were those churches acquired the ground, the neighborhood built up around them?
Yeah.
I'm really having a hard time driving by this neighborhood, driving by the school. I've been by it three times. The times I've been there, the school parking lot looked awfully full to me. That being said, a Friday afternoon, maybe it won't be.
It's not a large parking lot.
I know. And I mean, I think to hang our hat on, gosh, we're going to have all kinds of parking over there, I, I have a hard time seeing that during the school year on a Friday afternoon. I think owning property, I think, is a bundle of rights. I think we've got a neighborhood here that I'm having a real hard time seeing, hey, let's buy this house and start a church here fitting into that particular neighborhood. And I, obviously, I'm a minority.
Well, I know we need to move forward, but, you know, hindsight is always very valuable. It is a shame that when they purchased this property, there was not a contingency put on the purchase, you know, contingent upon being able to obtain their conditional use permit. But that being said, it didn't happen, so I guess we just have to deal with what's in front of us.
I'm not sure that should be a burden on the neighborhood.
Oh, I agree totally, Kenny. I totally agree, but...
I think at this point in time, I think it'd be easy to put the kitchen back in it, resell it as a house. I think what they need to find is something zoned office or something that has the adequate parking.
With as much office space as available, I'm sure we could find something.
I know, Pam, and I, that's what I'm really struggling with. They're nice young fellows and obviously they didn't do their homework before they got, got involved with this, but I'm not sure now that that should be a penalty for any neighborhood.
I agree, Ken. So we have a motion to second for a 30-day deferral. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Aye.
Item 27 is deferred to the next meeting. Item 28 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plant Commercial District to allow a daycare center at 4515 East 26th Street. Staff report.
Good evening. The applicant is requesting to have a daycare center at the Sioux Falls Martial Arts Academy on East 26th Street to coordinate their programs and parent guardian schedules in the pickup and drop-off type of timeframes. The applicant is Kathy Estes Williams. The applicant is Kathy Estes-Williams and Brad Johnson, the size of the parcel on which they're going to be placing this daycare is one point nine acres, although they are just consuming, they are taking one tenant's space on that building. The, when you look through here, one of the conditional use standards that will strike, that will strike you is that we typically require that daycare centers and family daycares are located in areas where adequate and safe playgrounds with sufficient green areas can be provided, and where safe access to the uses available in areas where such uses will be convenient for their clients. In this case, they don't have green space, obviously, on their site, they don't have access to green space directly adjacent to their site, one of the reasons that, but they're asking for the daycare license to coordinate programs, they're, they're going to be taking children as young as three years old, and the state is telling them that they need to get their city approvals, and they need to go through state licensing for daycare in order to be able to do this. One of the things that they've indicated to us is that they will be able to bus their children up to Frank Olson Park, which is at Eighteenth and Sycamore, on certain days or special events that they would use, and, it's, like I said, because they're in supervisor care of children as young as three years old, approval from both the City of Sioux Falls and the State of South Dakota is required, the applicant has indicated that no more than sixty children will be served, staff for this facility has not yet been hired, but the applicant has indicated that staff and a certified director for this, for the preschool program will be added once they've obtained the required approvals, hours of operation from five-thirty a.m. to nine p.m. are anticipated at this time, and additional bathroom facilities are required, and the applicant has indicated that the landlord is, has approved the intention to add these facilities. We are recommending approval based on the nature of their program, and the, and with three conditions, and that, the first is that the approval's for this applicant only, the second is that they need designate parking spaces for drop-off and loading of children and sign them accordingly, and a copy of the state license shall be provided to the planning department upon the granting of this license, of said license, so that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
I'm Kathy Williams, one oh two West Thirty-seventh Street, I'm representing Brad Johnson, who's the owner of this business.
Anything to add?
Um, no, we've been teaching children for a long time, and it was an opportunity to reach a younger group of children during a time when our facility is generally empty, there's not a daycare facility in the area except for Montessori at Bonson and Twenty-Sixth Street, we're a main artery now to a commercial district that's being developed out there, plus the Prairie Hills housing and the people coming in from Brandon, we saw a need for it, we have been a school a long time, and it was an opportunity that we thought we would ask for.
Any questions, Kathy? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item twenty-eight?
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty with the three stipulations. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion to second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, item twenty-eight is approved with three stipulations. Item twenty-nine is a special use permit in Subarea A of the Prairie Meadows Plan Development District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at four fifty-three West Sixty-Ninth Street. Staff report.
Uh, the applicant is requesting a special use permit in order to obtain a beer and wine license at Black Sheep Coffee, Black Sheep Coffee has purchased the former Cascada Cafe, if you're familiar with that, at Sixty-Ninth and Minnesota in the Waterfall Plaza, they'd like to add beer and wine sales as part of their, their offering. We are recommending approval of this special use permit with two conditions, one is approval for the applicant only, and two is the security management, management plan must be provided to and approved by the Sioux Falls Police Department. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, this, this would not be an accessory use to a restaurant-
No.
... or such like that.
We don't have that classification anymore, that was taken out as part of the reclassification, yeah, with the, with the state revising their laws on how they issue-
That's right, I knew that, so, thank you.
This is, well, one of the issues is, where does, where does full-service restaurant, and where does on-sale alcohol, where's that line at this point? Full-service restaurant, we're looking for a separate bar facility within that restaurant, where there's actually a line, you can tell the difference, which is why they are not considered a full-service restaurant, then, so.
I just have a quick question, one of the standards is, will not create an undue concentration of similar uses, how do you define that?
That is, you know, it's tough, it's, it's, Jeff, help me with that one.
Because I think Teners is right next door.
What? Yeah, right, and, you know, we look at, we look at certain intersections, and it's basically-
That was an unfair question at ten o'clock at night.
I said a quick question, so.
Yeah, an undue concentration depends on the amount of audience participation there is, honestly, because an undue concentration on Tenth and Phillips is a lot different than the undue concentration we had when we were at Sixth and Van Epps, when we were over on the east side of town, and the neighbor showed up and said, two is too many, eighteen downtown is not too many, because people want that many, so an undue concentration is not defined, and it never has been, and it probably never will be, yeah. So it's by that amount of crowd participation.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
After all that?
You don't have an applicant.
Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak on item twenty-nine? Dave, do we need to have an applicant to act on the item?
Uh, well, I'm not specifically sure why he isn't here, he should be, one of the issues that we had discussed during his application process was some of the things that he was going to have to undergo, and with, and we talked about that with building, building services, which required a, that he'd be required to sprinkle the tenant's space as part of his application, because he was getting the alcohol license, and I don't, I know that that was an issue that he was trying to work out, on whether that was something or not that he should do, so, I think that maybe deferral is probably what we should do at this point, while we talk to him.
Okay, so commission action on item twenty-nine?
I move to defer item twenty-nine until next month.
I second.
There's a motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor of deferral, say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, item twenty-nine is deferred to next month. And, item thirty, special use permit in Subarea A, Summit Edition Plan Development District to allow a full-service restaurant at ten-ten North Minnesota Avenue. Staff report, please. Perhaps you could ask if the applicant or the representative was here this evening? We have an applicant for item thirty. Is there any commission action to defer item thirty?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, item thirty is deferred until next month.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, uh, motion to second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.